Good evening, everyone. This is the Town Council meeting for March 19th, 2019, called the Quarter. Peter Van Steen, I would like to have a moment of silence in memory of Robert Driscoll, Sr., who passed away last week. Bob is a member of the Portcasset Committee, many, many years as chair, and he was also a member of the Plating Board and tons of other committees through the years. He was also the father of our former Town Council president. Also, in your prayers, in moment of silence, let's think of the 50 victims of violence in the Netherlands a couple of days ago. Thank you. Thank you. We have a little call vote, please.
Councilor Inman, Councilor Callow, Councilor Christopher, Councilor Bonkori, Councilor Sordo, Councilor Farino, Councilor Conti, Vice President Luchieri, President Vecchia.
It's present.
Thank you.
I'd like to change the motion to approve the minutes of the March 5th, 2019 Town Council meeting. That circulated?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all of you say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it. Town managers report. This will be a present by our town manager, Austin Byzak.
Good evening, everyone. Who's still awake? It's nearly 7:30. Alright, I will try to make it through this as briefly as possible. I want to try to reiterate, this is the beginning of a public discussion concerning our financial plan for the next fiscal year. This is not the beginning or end of it within here, it is the start. So over the next two months, there will be many public meetings to continue the discussion about this document, and then the Finance Commission will pass a recommended budget along to the Town Council, and the Town Council in June will also vote on and approve the budget in a final manner. So to begin, I wanted to say, everyone, for coming here tonight. Civic engagement is very important to me. I like whenever people come out to events like this to show interest in what's happening in their community, in the finances of their community, and it is important to me, and I am passing it on to my children, that this is of the utmost importance to participate as much as possible. I'd like to especially thank the following people: the council, the council president, Ron Vecchia.
The Finance Commission, Dave Rodriguez, and Anna Friedman, right here. They worked tirelessly to put this budget together. I thank them multiple times within the document, and I truly would be remiss if I did not mention that this wouldn't come together without them. Dave was talking with our printer this morning at 2:00 a.m., so that is how tight we got this budget in. But it happened, and we're excited. Also, my department heads, who have been working diligently since I started on August 20th, which coincidentally tomorrow, I have been seven months on the job. Lastly, my family, my wife Neka, who is hard at work doing the show Chronicle that's on the air literally right now, so she could care less about what I'm doing, and my two children, Cassius, who is probably already asleep, and Zoe, who I hope is going to sleep soon. On that note, so the highlights of the budget itself, we have 2.3 million in growth, fiscal '20 over fiscal '19. The money will primarily go towards fixed costs, the school department, and municipal town departments, and some of my major policy issues and initiatives that I'm going to be trying to undertake along with the council in the coming year is continued work on the Center Business District, work on the middle school site, Town Master Plan, and Win 2030, and some technology initiatives amongst many other things which I will elaborate on tonight. One thing I didn't note is that link at the top of it, the Google slash slides slash the number and letter combination. I'm trying to give everyone the opportunity to participate in this budget process. Questions can be submitted there directly to me. We're going to open it up to the public to speak as well at the end of it. It's not necessarily public comment, but I want to try to answer a couple of questions that I can to begin with, and from there, again, please take time to digest this document because it's big and it's thick and there's a lot of information in there. So just looking at the budget from a very high level, we have $64,641,265 in total revenue and expenditures. That is balanced. We are at zero in this budget, which is what we have to do. We have a $2.8 million increase over FY 2019 for all funds, which is a 4.5% increase, and our ongoing general fund revenue and expenditures is up 1.6 million, which is a 3.29% increase year over year. Just to put that in context of those year-over-year changes in terms of the general fund revenues and expenditures, at a very high level, the schools' need-based request was over 10% and the ongoing revenue only went up the 3.29%. So to put things in perspective, the asks are significantly bigger than what we're dealing with in terms of our budget. Just to reiterate, that 3.29%, that is $1.672 million for the general fund of a difference. Now, that is the 2.5% that we have, plus a little change. It is very difficult to maintain service levels with a year-over-year change like that, and I will continue to reiterate that this year-over-year change is a struggle for my office, for the entire municipal government, including the school department, to deal with year over year. So continuing with that, Winthrop has very little financial flexibility, and to show that point, here is where the year-over-year expenditure change looks like. Schools, 54.4%, town, 22.6%, and fixed costs are 23%. So this is not to throw any shade towards the school department or anything like that. It shows how big the ask is within their contractually obligated benefits and small changes year over year. This is tight, and this is hard to deal with year over year. Moving forward, to talk about revenues, you can kind of, this makes it pretty clear, it totals up to the 3.29%. Looking at property tax, the change is 2.71% year-over-year, and I can talk about some of the actuals there. Our property tax levy limit is $29,138,110. Our Prop 2.5 increase, which is the 2.5% increase that we are obligated to only get up to in terms of our tax rate, is $728,453. The new growth is $175,000. We have debt exclusions for $4,96,350, and our maximum allowable levy is $34,137,913. Our net property tax is $33,937,913. So very high-level revenue information right here, which is also expressed in the document. As you can see, small changes. Moving towards expenditures, we have a 3.06% change in the town departments, a 4.47% change in the school department, which is what my proposed budget has in it, and what has been presented by the school committee, by the superintendent to the school committee is still forthcoming, and they are working on somewhat of a parallel process at this point in time. Non-departmental is a 5.39% change. Our enterprise funds, which don't have much bearing on the overall general fund, is a 5.66% increase, and our non-appropriated is a 16.5% increase. The majority of these expenditure increases are related to contractual obligations and rightsizing to reflect current salaries. Non-departmental funds are mostly fixed expenses such as health insurance, energy costs, and debt service. The school department, this fiscal year, received an additional transfer of $146,223 for a total funding amount that got them north of $20 million, and these non-appropriated accounts that are there in the last line, we have no say in that. Those are state assessments, such as our MBTA charge and things like that, that we just have to represent them from the state, and we move forward. So our revenue is predominantly limited by Proposition 2.5 and the town's housing inventory. As much as we continue to talk about the phrasing of the town doesn't have a spending problem, it has a revenue problem, this is the key to the revenue problem. This limits the amount of money every year that we are able to spend to provide everyone's services in this town because we are handcuffed by Proposition 2.5. I have talked previously about overrides. That is not something that can come from my office. That is something that the community needs to call for, and the Town Council potentially needs to set a charge for. That said, it is the reality of the situation that we are going to be facing some difficult consequences in the next fiscal year if we do not come up with some solutions in the very near term. In terms of fixed costs, they continue to increase at a rate that is faster, growing faster than our ongoing revenue. Our debt service costs represents the general fund debt service payments that are being paid primarily from the debt exclusion from the middle school and Miller Field. Our energy costs are budgeted slightly below level funding the current year due to our participation in solar credit programs. Our GIC health insurance premiums are increasing on average approximately 3.3%. Based on the current enrollment, the budgeted costs are actually expected to increase just over 4%. Our waste management contract is up at the end of fiscal '20. That is something that I will follow up on later as one of our policy initiatives concerning a solid waste advisory committee that I would like to have start working in the very near future. Our state assessments are also increasing by 20% this year, which results in a cost to the town of $173,000. This is primarily caused to, caused due to increases in the tuition paid to charter schools and the school choice program. In terms of the school department, this is a one line that I put in here because outside of the one line that I give to the school department, it is then given up to the school committee and the superintendent how to spend that money effectively within the parameters of their own work. So that is the number that we have for them right now. My proposed is $21,41,310. That amount incorporates the $900,000 year-over-year change that we were able to get to a balanced budget with going forward. That said, the school department received, or excuse me, the superintendent, Lisa, who's here, she submitted to the school committee and community a recommended budget of 20, a little north of $23 million, which represents an increase of $2.772 million, or 13.6% over the fiscal '19 budget, which again, we are talking about the limitations that we have with our budget. And when I talk about limitations, this is limitations in the services that we can provide to our children and to all of you. So full stop, we have spaces in this building that we are in right now that we are not utilizing correctly because we do not have the staffing levels that we need to utilize them correctly. Going ahead, this is a display of the municipal departments, how we kind of spread out the money across the different departments. Examples of the investment year-over-year is our police department has a 3.79% increase, our fire department has a 2.69% increase, DPW is right around 1%, and our libraries have a 3.43% increase. So very small increases across the board. We have been incredibly conservative in all of our revenue modeling and conservative on our side in terms of spending and being very cautious in terms of taking on anything. That said, we have programmed all available funds and we will not be able to maintain level service level, level services, full stop. You cannot do the same job with the same amount of money every year. That's just not how these things can work. The town departments on my side requested over $2.8 million for fiscal '20 as a delta year-over-year. The school department asked, again, to reiterate, $2.77 million. We are far, far off from what we're looking to do. So we need the community to understand that we would like to do more if we were given the ability to do more. Now moving into some of my polished initiatives that I'll be going into, in terms of the Center Business District, and these are kind of the exciting things and get to talk about the narrative that the next year has in front of us. The Center Business District, as of right now, the Town Council has approved the financing of the infrastructure program to deal with water sewer and drainage. In addition, they will, the surface work will be included in that. I've had a managers committee working with my assistant town manager concerning, kind of bringing this all to a bid process. They communicated with the surface work architects, they have gone through the financing, they have talked about some of the surface level work, they have done a peer review of the work that's already been done. We are trying to button this up so that we can bid this work out and get to work this summer, which is coming very close. Going on from there though, is that we will be getting, begin, once we bring on a contractor to do this work, we will begin to work with the public meetings concerning the impacts at the local level, door-to-door concerning this work. We will be upfront and honest about the impacts to traffic and where we would be doing work, and all those types of things will be coming in the very near future, but we cannot talk about those until we bring a contractor onboard. So we need to bid that work out, and it should, I hope that it happens in the next month or two. I'm just working for a little bit more work of that committee. It's incredibly important to me that we start moving forward on the Center Business District in terms of the infrastructure work. Beyond that, the middle school site, which has previously been described as the biggest economic development opportunity for the town. Not my words, it is represented in multiple documents that the town has presented previously. The town will engage in a request for proposal process in fiscal '20. I would do anything to try to move that up, but I think that we need to get our ducks in a row a little bit more about the legal ramifications around the property as well as things that we want to set within an RFP that are sacred, that we don't necessarily want touched, or if they are touched, how we will alleviate that and mitigate it for the community. Again, after an extensive community process, we hope to bring a developer onboard. So to continue to reiterate, I want these to be public and community-based processes, and I want the community engaged as much as possible on these because it is not my decision, it is the community's decision on what direction we would like to take these things, and I am here to facilitate that decision-making process. Moving on, so there are two things here. One is a town-wide master plan. After the CBD master plan process and how that has turned out, and our need to reengage with an outside contractor who helped us with that process, I have been made readily aware that there is a need to engage in a town-wide master planning process. And this is not just a zoning, this is about choosing a direction for the town. This town, I need to be fully frank with, needs to choose what direction they would like to go. If you would like to be a seaside community that has limited growth, you need to deal with the fiscal realities of what that presents, and if you would like to pursue economic development, you need to know what the ramifications of that would be and the potential impacts as well. So that is the point of a master planning process, that we come together to try to set a stage for the direction we would like to take Winthrop in the future. Beyond that, I used to call this Winthrop 2030, I'm referring to it as Win 2030 now. Thank you to Dave Rodriguez came up with that phrasing, but Win 2030 is going to be a nice, clean document that we can set some real goals for 2030 of what we would like to see within the community. I have some of the, basically, language that I would like to see, but what I need is to fill in the numbers. So I would like to see housing, but I want to see the numbers that you all would like to see in terms of new home construction, or unit creation, or what type of home values we are looking for. I can, again, put the words together, I need the community to decide what the values are that are the actual number values that we're looking for. For jobs, job creation, retention, training, those types of things. Per capita income, transportation safety, access, and equity, the activation of our opportunity zone, which is a great chance for this community to really utilize a different funding structure for an underutilized area of town, and at no cost to the town, this is all outside investment, but these are essentially good hedge fund people involved with funding some of these projects. So it is an exciting opportunity that we have there, and we hope that the opportunity zone can be activated. Climate resiliency is of the utmost importance to me. If Winthrop is hit with how the flood maps look in some of those models of 2050, 2100, I still plan on being here in 2050, and I care about my kids being alive at that time and having places to work. So if places like Winthrop do not prepare for the oncoming rise of our seawater, Winthrop will fail to exist. We see it now. We see it when it rains and things flood, and we're trying to alleviate those problems, but we need to continue working on this. I could spend your entire budget each year on climate resiliency, and it would not be enough. So I'm working with different levels of government as well on this matter because if the water does not scare you and you live in Winthrop, I think you need to stop and look out the window because it is there, there is very little we can do about it other than plan and try to figure out how we are going to deal with the water. Beyond that, education in terms of our test scores, our graduation rates, and our college acceptance. Try to highlight what's happening in the department, but then also set goals for ourselves about where we would like to drive things in the future. Lastly, the financial stability of the town as itself in terms of our free cash position and our bond rating. These are more in-house items, but they are incredibly important in terms of paying for these bigger ticket items like this wonderful building that you have here and things like that. You cannot borrow at good rates if you have a bad bond rating, and you get bad bond ratings with over-leveraging yourselves and not having good reserves and things like that. So we are trying to work on that for the future. From there, the next one is some technology upgrades. So I want as much information that we have in-house to be available to the public. I want people to engage and have the opportunity to engage with our government from home if they decide to. I do not want you beholden to the hours of Town Hall to be able to apply for a building permit, or apply for a public information request, and things like that. I want these things to be done through digital systems. We built this budget off of a system called OpenGov, which, not for nothing, OpenGov basically recreated what I used to do in my old position in Brookline in a piece of software for significant significantly less than I was paid in Brookline. So these systems help us, and it's not to replace anyone's job, what it is is to make our jobs easier and allow us to do different work. Beyond that viewpoint is for our online building permitting, code and health enforcement. Next request will be used for our public records management. See Click Fix will be utilized, or something similar to See Click Fix. We want a constituent engagement tool for people to be able to report potholes and things like that into the Department of Public Works Office. We also want the Public Works Office to be able to readily document the work that they are doing so that people understand that they have service level agreements that need to be found within the parameters of all of the work that they're doing and not just single issues or single items. Civic Plus is going to help my office with a website upgrade. It's not going to be more than a refresh, but our website looks outdated at this point, and I welcome the opportunity to make it look a little bit better. Going on, the Community Development Block Grant Program. So this is funding that comes from the Federal Housing and Urban Development Division, and this is incredibly important money that we should be applying for. Winthrop would qualify for this, and in my mind, I would like to secure this funding to ultimately pay for a planner and an administrator within a community, I like a planning and development, community development office. This town has gone too long without some of these things. We don't have a good funding source for it now, so I'm going to find a funding source so that Winthrop has more money to spend. The hardest thing with CDBG money is reporting back to the federal government within the parameters that they set forth. So we need to have real lawyer-type of minds looking at the information that we submit to HUD because they will pull the funding as readily as they provide it for us if we do not cross our Ts and dot our Is. So this is a great thing that we're going to try to do in fiscal '20. We're at least going to start this process in fiscal '20, moving towards securing CDBG funding. Lastly, in terms of my policy issues, to kind of go over right now, is solid waste. Our contract ends in the next year, in the next fiscal year, and with that in mind, I would like to task a committee to take a comprehensive look at the solid waste-related services that the town provides. That includes refuse, recycling, composting, soft materials, those types of things. We need to holistically look at all of these things. I have been engaged in this process in my two previous positions as well before here, and this is an arduous process. In addition, right now, we have an all-in contract with our waste removal contract, and in that, we don't have any say about our recycling. So our recycling is treated the same way that our trash is, unfortunately. If they can't make money about off of it, then they don't recycle it. So that is something we need to keep in mind if we would like to try to recycle more as a community. Beyond that though, just in The New York Times this weekend, there was an article about how expensive recycling is in the world market. China has essentially cut off the United States from recycling because they have called all of our materials contaminated, so there's very few places in the world for recyclable materials to be sold. So the market is flying through the floor, and ways that communities used to make money in the past, they now are paying money for. So although you want to do the good thing in recycling, your recycling may not be dealt with the correct way, and it may not even ultimately be recycled. So this is something that I would like a committee to work on and continue moving forward to understand the impacts of our solid waste program, ultimately provide us with a system that I think would lead towards uniform barrels, so we would have uniform recycling and trash barrels at everyone's location, and kind of move on from there. Moving ahead, so we have some significant initiatives to take on in the next year. Center Business District, the middle school, master planning, a long-term plan, zoning changes, solid waste, and the list goes on. So these are things that are going to have longstanding impacts. So everyone who's in this room, again, I appreciate you for coming. I hope that you would like to engage in some of these processes as they come out. If there is something that you are individually interested in, feel free to contact my office or the council to participate in one of the different committees that we will have with them, or even to know when the meetings are happening so you can participate. From there, so just to hit on our long-range financial plan, that's part that wasn't necessarily reflected in previous budgets, but I would like to instill in this budget and budgets going forward. We need to take a longer outlook on our finances, our financial and budget issues. This cannot be a year-to-year fix things on the fly type of thing. I am trying as hard as possible to anticipate things in future years, but we are dealing with two real fundamental problems. We cannot maintain, or we cannot continue to withstand the limits of our current revenue structure, and decisions that were made in the past 30 years continue to have impacts on our ability to utilize money right now. So with this, we have inflating expenses and revenues based on a trend line moving forward, and just looking kind of some of the trend lines, we look like we're off by 1.9 million for fiscal '21, well over 2 million fiscal '22, and close to 3 million in fiscal '23. That's just with extrapolating some of the numbers that we have in-house right now forward. With that, do you want to hit on revenues, Anna? I'm going to invite Anna Friedman up here, who's our CFO, to talk about some of our revenues more specifically.
Just to add some, just to add some additional context to some of the numbers that Austin has been talking about, this
has been talking about, this particular slide right here, it demonstrates sort of the inflexibility that Austin's been speaking about in terms of the town's budget. So for example, property tax revenue is not shown on here, but you can see the second greatest source of revenue for the town is state aid, so the town is quite reliant on state aid. It's about 25% of the revenues that are used to support the ongoing budget. And so should the state enter, should we enter a recession, or should the state make policy changes regarding how much state aid is granted to the town? That's certainly an area that could cause further inflexibility for the budget. Additionally, it sort of demonstrates there aren't a lot of sort of levers that the town can pull individually to increase revenues. The water vehicle tax and other excise taxes are also contribute to the overall revenues that come in, and the pilot money that I believe Austin's gonna speak about in more detail in a minute. But other than that, it's really the state aid and the property tax that funds, that funds the budget. And I think, just to give you some additional details for what Austin's gonna speak about in a minute, the state aid increased by about $235,000 going into FY '20 over FY '19, based on our current projections, and those estimates are based off of Governor Baker's budget presentation from January. Those numbers are likely to change throughout the spring as the state undergoes its budget process, and typically those numbers actually go up. Hopefully that will go up a little bit during this process, but it's not necessarily the kind of increase that will solve the sort of budget considerations that Austin has been mentioning so far. We also, the other bucket at the top there, the little bar at the top of the chart, that is some funding that we identified that we believe are ongoing sources of revenue that we can transfer onto the budget each year to help pay for some ongoing expenses that's gone up a little bit year over year. And funding for capital, we've identified about $500,000 that has been sort of set off to the side in another fund from the sale of some town property a few years ago, and we believe that that funding, which can only be used for capital investments, could be best reprioritized for some urgent capital needs that Austin will get into a little bit later in the presentation. And this is just a little bit more context on the state aid piece that I was just speaking about. So state aid is going, is increasing the $235,000 over FY '19, based on the governor's projections, but at the same time, there are the assessments that Austin spoke about earlier, that the town does not have any control over, and those are increasing at a rate faster than our state aid is increasing. So those assessments from the state for things like charter schools and school choice, that eats into the overall benefit that the town is getting from the increase in state aid. So this just demonstrates that we are beholden to some decisions that are made on Beacon Hill in terms of how much revenue in terms of for state aid is provided to the town, and also choices that are made for the assessments that are provided to the town and other policies. One thing just to quickly mention is that Chapter 70, which is the aid that provides, that goes to our schools, it's not currently, this is well-known around the state that Chapter, the Chapter 70 formula is not fully covering the costs of educating the Commonwealth's children, and that is, that's relevant in Winthrop as well, in the sense that it doesn't fully pay for things like healthcare and special needs. The state is looking into this, and I know that Austin is working with other members of, you know, the state and other municipalities to look into this. But until that is reconciled, it's likely for us to see a trend that continues where our state aid is going up, but the state assessments are continuing to eat into that This is just a brief summary of the enterprise funds, and so these are sort of, I don't know how to say this differently, closed ecosystems, closed sort of funds that don't impact the general fund generally. They're intended to be self-sustaining, and so the four main, the four enterprise funds that the town has are the Harbor Master, the Ferry, the Recreation Fund, the Rink, and then, and then the fifth one is the Water Sewer Fund that Austin will speak about. No real major changes to our enterprise funds for next year, other than recreation. In order to balance the Recreation Fund, there are going to need to be, based on Austin's proposal, some changes to that programming, both in terms of eliminating programming that is, is unaffordable with current revenues and increasing revenues in order to balance the fund. It's, it's finance, it's required municipal finance that the funds are balanced, and so in order to get the math to work, those are some of the policy choices that will have to be discussed during this budgeting process. The other, and the other funds, no meaningful policy changes there recommended in this
All right, I'm back. So with that, our Water Sewer Fund, which we have been talking about frequently, and we will continue talking about. So this budget proposes $10,136,027, or, excuse me, 100, $10,136,027 in funding the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. This is an increase of 6.94% over the '19 budget. This is a combined sewer rate that I have publicly committed to, and I continue to commit to, will not be changed prior to July 1, 2020. The larger expenditure in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund is the assessment the town pays to the MWRA. Upcoming infrastructure projects that will hit in this next fiscal year are the Center Business District and the Lead Line Replacement Project. Longer-term infrastructure projects are the Morton Street Drainage Project and Ingleside Water Storage Project that we will work with the state in terms of the environmental bond bill on. So, you know, we can talk about this a bunch of different ways, and I will continue to reiterate. This right here is a graph that kind of shows what is happening with our Water Sewer Fund. When you look towards the left of that, you can see that the estimated revenues at one point in time were higher than the actual revenues. And then a period of time happened where that was not the case. So in those years where the estimated was lower than the actual, what was done, instead of increasing the rate, as you can see, the green right, the green line there is the rate, blue is estimated, red is actual revenues. When you have blue that's higher than red, and you don't have a change in the revenue, you are eating up your reserves. And that's what the previous administration and the previous water commissioner had chosen to do. Instead of raising the rates incrementally to pay for this, they chose to get rid of the reserves that were on hand. At one point in time, this enterprise fund had over $1 million in reserves. Now that number is $46,000. As you can see right there, there are two big jumps, because those big jumps were necessary to get that red line to be less than the blue line, and that is what was necessary. We need our actual revenues to meet what our estimated revenues are, because the estimated revenues are what pay the bills. This is the MWRA assessment, which has been discussed at multiple times. So if you look at it, those lines all trend upwards. There is no downward trend here. There is no reflection of a decrease in usage at the local level. This is the reality that we are facing. It is a three-year average. So the water assessment rates, charges are calculated using a flat per million gallons, multiplied by a metered water, metered water use by a community in the last fiscal year. This is from the MWRA. In addition, operating costs from the sewer assessment rates are allocated to each community based on the average of the prior three calendar year's total flow, with adjustments for strength of flow. Capital costs, including debt service, are all allocated to each community based on a combination of the average prior three years' peak wastewater flow. Again, this is all about three-year averages and not about what has changed in the last six months. I, again, will reiterate, I am more than apologetic for where the water rate has to be. This is a bill that the community has to pay. There is no funding source other than the Water Sewer Fund to pay MWRA and to pay for the infrastructure being done in town. Full stop. So, moving on to better things that we are spending our money on, the Capital Improvement Plan. So this year, we are excited to announce that there is over $500,000 in one-time funding. It will support things like our critical technology investments that we have, public works investments for new vehicles, and a police vehicle replacement in the next fiscal year as well. What we intended to do was spread the wealth of this money around to as many departments as possible, because I did not have the opportunity to increase many things in the operating budget. Capital is one-time money, operating is year-to-year money. We have $150,000 in ongoing pilot funding from the MWRA, or from Masport, excuse me, because we renegotiated our agreement with them. So with that, we are going to do some large-scale town building repairs and infrastructure improvements, as well as sidewalk repairs. Lastly, we have the Winthrop Foundation to pull funding from, which is going to be half a million dollars per year. And the Winthrop Foundation appointees have been made aware, they need to be sworn in and incorporate bylaws, and then they can get to approving projects. That $500,000, we are, my office will be recommending library infrastructure repairs, such as the roof at the library, which has many leaking problems, the residential yard waste facility haulout. This was an old program that the town had done to clean up the transfer station for yard waste at DPW. Part of the job was done and not the whole job. So what I am doing is finishing the whole job, and then subsequently allowing funding to be available to continue this cleanup year over year. Lastly, Cummings Playground, which I have heard from many people is of the utmost importance. That is something that I would like to see funded out of this as well. So we have a good opportunity to fix a lot of problems around town with one-time money, and we will continue fixing things. But again, I do not want to be wholly reliant on one-time money to fix our problems. I have to reiterate, this 55% increase that Masport provides is a big deal. In fiscal '18, we got 900,000. In fiscal '25, we will be getting $2 million. When we renegotiate the pilot agreement with Masport, that is where the negotiation starts, and we go up from there. There is no going back. This is a good thing from the town, and this was done on behalf of the negotiations of Speaker DeLeo, Senator Boncorie, the Town Council, and my office. And this really does show the importance that Masport has with this community, that they are willing to front this type of money for the community. In terms of the Winthrop Foundation, this half a million dollars, this is a lot of money to have available every year to spend on one-time things. Any community would love to have an additional half a million dollars each year to spend on capital items, based off of money that they got through an agreement. So we are gonna model our bylaws after what they had in East Boston. We are going to have that Winthrop Foundation be presented with many opportunities to fund good projects within town, but ultimately, this is an extension of our capital process that we have an additional funding source, and a good funding source for a lot of good things that need to happen around town, where I'm excited to put some shovels in the ground and ultimately cut some ribbons. So just hitting on some additional notes, in terms of intergovernmental work, I'm, I know the community's hard at work, but I am also working in terms of our relationship with the MWRA and Masport. These conversations do not ever end. I am on the Metro Mayor's Coalition, which is a group of Boston and the 15 surrounding communities, trying to push some legislation issues forward. We, I'm gonna be speaking on the Hill on Friday concerning the education funding. This stuff is important, and we're trying to take the lead on some of this stuff, and I'm happy to represent Winthrop at the table. I'm a member of the Metro Mayor's Association, the ICMA, and our chiefs are looking at solutions concerning how we regionalize support in terms of like NMLAC and things like that, and our police, or our fire department, in our interactions with Masport. What is sad that happens sometimes is, we train our employees very well, and then other entities end up hiring them from us. And what we want to do is try to figure out how we can benefit from those relationships, and either have the training offset or something like that, so we don't have to continue fronting the money for training people who ultimately go somewhere else. Climate resiliency, again, not to beat a dead horse, but this is important stuff to me. There's environmental bond bill money that we're gonna be utilizing for Ingleside and some other places. There's the MVP grant, which is for climate vulnerability. I'm trying to regionalize some of our work on energy consumption and climate change and conservation into, in office with Revere and Chelsea. The speaker just introduced his Greenworks program, which I would love the opportunity for Winthrop to apply to, to work on some of our seawalls or natural seawalls, or whatever direction we want to do in terms of our own interaction with the water. And lastly, our CDBG money. So hopefully, these are all gonna be sources that we're gonna be able to tap on in the future to have additional money to work. We are going to reengage with all of our committees, boards and commissions. We want to start bringing some of them in in May, but this is a process that we'll be continuing going forward. We want everyone to be in line so that we are rowing our boat together, instead of one side rows in one direction and one side rows in the other, which is happening sometimes. So we want to reengage with all the committee chairs and board chairs, talk about what they're looking to do in the coming fiscal year, and what the council would like them to work on as well in the coming fiscal year. It is important to me that these committees know what the council wants them to work on, because many of these are advisory committees to the council, and I want them ultimately reporting to and advising the council in the long run. Lastly, on the ballot this year, in November, the ban of marijuana sales will be on the ballot. That will be something that will be decided in November. Concurrently, we still have to have zoning in place in the event that it, this ban is not put into place, and operators want to come in town and try to set up shop. There is a negotiation process that would have to take place in terms of host community agreements and things like that, so it's not like someone can just open a shop the next day. But in the event that it fails on the ballot, we need to deal with the reality of operators coming to town and soliciting us to try to set up shop. So I wanted to highlight a couple departments that submitted me some additional information. This is from our Veteran Services, an overview of some of the claims that were submitted in the past year, the service hours done, and the Food Bank. And Roe is hard as work, at work looking at legislative, concerning veterans benefits. She's also intimately involved with the Brave Act as well, and she has a dedicated parking spot, and soon those monuments will be repaired, and that will be something that we'll have a good ceremony for, I believe, on Memorial Day, if I'm not mistaken. The Public Library and Museum. Diane did a good job of highlighting some of the new items that were purchased, what is happening in our Children's Department. I am happy that we have 4,393 fantastic children attending our programs. I wonder how many bad children attended the same programs. Visit, circulation, computer usage, all those types of fun things. But again, highlights of a department working very hard with strained resources. So where do we go from here in this budget process? On the left-hand side is what the Finance Commission is going to be working on. They will have public meetings every other Tuesday in March, April and May. Department heads will be attending specific meetings to discuss their budgets, and they will present a recommended financial plan to the Town Council by May 30th, June 1st time period. Concurrently, the Town Council will have their regularly scheduled meetings, and they will include short budget presentations from department heads. The Town Council will review the recommendations of the Finance Commission in June, and the Town Council will hopefully approve a final budget in June. So that's kind of the path that we are on going forward. Now, where can you find additional information? So all of this information is on the town website as of now? Yeah, it's on there. So you can go on the website and look at the budget. We are going to present more ways to interact with the budget as well. We are going to be building what are called stories from our OpenGov system, so we can walk through visually and add some narrative to some of our good points and some of the struggles that we have. So there's lots of availability online. Physical copies can be requested from the Town Manager's Office of this proposed budget. We didn't want to print that many of them, because this, again, is only a proposed budget. We can print them off and have them available to you, but the real good budget is gonna be the final one that's approved that we'll put into a fancy book, but that is a couple months from now. On June 1st, that Finance Commission recommended financial plan will be available on the town website. What we will do is, we will take the narrative that they provide us with and show where the deltas are in the document, so it's readily known to people what they are recommending. When the Town Council... When the Town Council approves a financial plan, it will be available on the website, OpenGov, physical copies will be in Town Hall in the library. You won't be able to miss it. With that said, I dare to jump into questions. There are only so many that I can take right now, full honesty. And that said, this is not necessarily like a back and forth public comment period. This is me trying to answer a couple. If people want to come to the microphones and ask a few, I am open to that. That said, I want people to take the time to read and digest this budget. There's a lot of information there. So I would remiss for anyone to come up here and ask a question that I would say it's in the document. But going from there, I have some questions up here. If you would like to ask a question live first, you can go right ahead.
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio, forty-nine Waldemar Ave. And I forget all the precincts all the time. I'll be frank, I wrote this down. So I guess one of my, again, I know this is in a public hearing, but from what I've heard and what you stated on a WCAT program, that you are looking for a two and a half override or two in the next fiscal year. Can you provide the town with a reasoning for that aside from mismanagement, lawsuits that the town has succumbed? I live on Waldemar Ave. The old middle school we knew from, oh, look, November of two thousand thirteen, we knew was going to be vacant. And I think on the agenda tonight, there's a transfer of monies from some fund to another fund for the operating expenses. I also heard you say tonight that Winter, again, I'm paraphrasing, has to realize what we have. We've had an old middle school that has been vacant that we've known of for five years.
So.
We're paying outrageous expenses on that.
So the thing is, you never bid this project out. No bid has ever gone out.
First of all, sir, I didn't because last time I checked, I'm Kathleen Capuccio, a resident of Winthrop. I never bid anything. If I actually had the authority to do that, sir, I would have. I don't have that authority. I have elected town officials who have elected and appointed town managers to do that job. So enough with putting it on the town residents that we somehow haven't done something. That is outrageous. And I'm so glad that you just said that because it showed your absolute ignorance to the process. That is not our job. I worked. I worked with many people, like awesome residents of this town and awesome members of our council, Mr. Vecchia, Mr. Boncory, Mr. Latiri, that we worked on doing overrides and debt exclusions. And let's be clear on the two because they're different, actually.
Yeah.
They're different.
I didn't talk about debt exclusion tonight.
We have worked in this town that you're not indebted to. And you've made that clear. You have said it publicly. This town isn't special. This town is whatever it is. You have said it publicly, plain and simple, and I can back it up. What I'm saying to you is do not put it on the residents of this town that have worked hard and that have done their due diligence more so than you and more so than the council, meaning the legal council that the town has employed. The CBD is a disgrace. You're talking about the marijuana guidelines and the CBD guidelines. The zoning is a mess. You cannot determine what the guidelines or ordinances are because you don't know what they are. And that is your job.
Can I respond to that?
That, no, when I'm done, you can. That is your job. So please do not have the arrogance to put it on this town that somehow we're not doing our job, we're not paying our taxes, and we're not doing what we're supposed to do. And I would love for you to answer one question because you've said it publicly and privately. Are you looking for two and a half overrides from this town? Because I can assure you, you're not getting them.
That is fine. In the event that there are not two and a half overrides, we will be making difficult fiscal decisions concerning the staffing levels of our school department and our public services that are provided on my municipal site.
That's a joke. Has nothing to do with that schools, that's a joke.
Oh.
It's a joke.
Okay.
Has nothing to do with us schools.
All right, okay. So I answered your question. Is there another question you would like me to answer?
Yes, yes, answer the overrides. Are you asking for overrides?
I'm talking about the realities of our fiscal situation and I'm, that cannot come from me.
You said it!
I said that I am preparing the public to have a conversation about this. I cannot charge anything.
You said it on a raw table with Mr. Vecchia and you said it in private meetings with other people. You're asking for two overrides over the next fiscal year. Just admit it!
I'm not asking for two overrides in the next fiscal year. This is a balanced, this is a balanced budget. We have the money to pay for it.
No, then don't admit it then.
No, what I had said publicly, no, I said in the fall of two thousand twenty was when an override should probably happen if the town decides to go that route. If they decide to go that way, I cannot put this on the ballot. This is up to the town to do this. So again.
We have limited in our budgets. How about you? I'm retired.
I'm, sir.
Coming in all the time. You just decide to build something and to do something. And it's not just this town, it's all over the place. Let's just tax them some more.
Sir.
Corrido, by the way, Cottage Park Road, precinct five.
So what I have done.
I'm just asking you and everybody else to live within your budgets. You get all the ideas.
Sir, sir, it is all, all of the money that I am talking about is in this document.
I think I said what I wanted to say, but I mean, you know, I'm retired. I occasionally can work, so it's good for me because I can supplement my income. But a lot of people in this town, senior citizens, can't. And you hear about the expenses going up, going up, going up. Where's the money coming from? And you folks probably have a lot of good ideas and you want to do a lot of good things. But with all the malls closing and a lot of malls closing, do you honestly think we can bring people in from out of town to shop in Winthrop by doing the center?
That's, sir.
How about turning that school into like a, you know how they get food courts? How about a business court? Get a lot of small businesses to go into that school.
Sir, we had Mass Life Sciences and the Office of Economic Development here looking for, at that site.
Yeah, but how long does it take?
A very long time. That's the thing is that, here's the thing, the community only has put out a request from information. That is all the community has done previously concerning the middle school site. Yes.
Well, then why don't the town officials come up with an idea and present it to us people?
I, okay.
I mean, really.
That's fine.
Turn it into a business court so that all little businesses go in there. I imagine a lot of small businesses would love to be centrally located and maybe some new ones.
Maybe.
Well, anyway.
So the thing is, to respond to your initial question, this is what I'm dealing with, with the constraints of the money. That's what my budget is.
Yeah, but now as the lady said, you eventually are going to be looking for two and a half override.
It's two hundred pages of information concerning the finances of the town. I welcome you to read it and digest it. I have only made my comments and made a presentation about it.
How many votes did it take to get this school? Enough said. Enough said. We keep bringing it up, continue to get it, and again, if that's your job, that's your job.
It's, sir, I'm, again, this is not something I am trying to do. I am trying to talk about the limitations of the budget in town. That is all. I'm just utilizing a pot of money that you all have entrusted me with. That is all.
Hi, Todd Sacco, precinct two. Maybe try to bring the temperature down in this room a little bit. So this has probably surprised a lot of people to hear, but in a way, you're right. We don't have a lot of options. We need more money. Or to kind of dovetail off what you said earlier about the conversation, do we have a spending problem or a revenue problem? I'll submit to people with common sense and good brains, we have both. We know we have a revenue problem, yet we continue to increase our expenses and not just on things that are maintenance wise. We can insistently increase our biggest expense. So we don't have a lot of choices. I don't necessarily support an override, but there's actually a question here. How many is going to be enough?
I don't know.
Don't answer yet. Let me finish, please. Because the next year, you'll have another contractual obligation and the next, and the next, and the next, and the next. So we can vote every year as a community for an override. I think that's probably our only option to be absolutely honest with everybody in the room. And eventually, we'll be San Francisco where the, we'll tax the middle class right out of Winthrop or actually now East Boston, Somerville, it's coming here now. In fact, I think you're from Somerville, aren't you?
Nope.
Okay.
I worked in Somerville, but.
You worked in Somerville, okay. So you know what I'm talking about. We are eradicating the middle class. So we either have to look internally at the way we hire and how we pay people, which is going to take a real tough, near impossible conversation, and most of you in here know exactly what I'm talking about, or we vote for overrides. That's it. And again, the focus on fixed incomes. I'm trying to get to retirement. It looks like it's not going to be here the way things are going, but we do have a choice to make. And I say you do put it on the ballot and let's see what happens.
So again, overrides, the intent of them are never to pay for contractual things. I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for that on a ballot. So, full disclosure. So quickly, would you like to go? I have one online, too.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Caponta-Disco of nineteen Johnson Ave. And speaking on behalf of the water bill questions, I'd like to know if my household decides to put in a well or looks into putting a well, will our property taxes go off on behalf of doing so?
I would have to look into that question. I don't know that off the top of my head.
I also have a second question. The middle school site on Pauline Street that was part of the reason why we have this big, beautiful building today that was beyond repair and beyond putting any investment into because of the ventilation system and the, hate to say, poor air quality that they had. If they decide to turn that into anything and if they decide to utilize that building for whether it's offices or after school programs, will they be fixing that building so the next generation that steps foot in there is not subjected to that kind of air quality?
Absolutely.
Okay, and where will that money be coming from?
From the developer that takes on the property.
As long as it's not through the town.
It will not be.
That's all I wanted to know.
Kathleen Napoli, District Four, and I organized, as you know, the Water Rate Audit Rally. So my question is simple. Can we have an audit of the past five years, say, of the management of the water and sewer funds?
Sure, so I.
We had, I'm just going to give you some background. We had about a hundred and fifty people attend the rally. I have hundreds of signatures. And at this point, it's become an issue of credibility. It is an issue of fairness, accuracy, and transparency. I'm not accusing anyone of anything and I give you a lot of credit for coming to the rally and listening to what people had to say and bringing your son.
Thank you.
Like you said, teaching him how to become a person involved with civics and listen to people and listen to the other side of the story. And in this case, the other side of the story is that you've got a town with a median income of sixty-nine thousand dollars, median household income. So this is, one of the gentlemen that approached me at the rally, I had a lot of great questions come up. So I think I'm going to respond to your frequently asked questions with my frequently asked questions. All right? But I had a gentleman, senior citizen, come up to me at the rally to say, I don't know how I'm going to pay this because they're from the greatest generation, they pay their bills. How am I going to pay this? How am I going to come up with this? Because it was so sudden, you know, it was very little notice. Obviously, you think you did what you had to do, but it's a real burden for people and he had to make some tough choices. And it's not about whether or not he would be going to the opera that month. It's, were I buying medicine or am I paying my water bill? So is it fair that we don't have a senior citizen discount? Been asked that multiple times as a result of this rally and the people I've talked to. Why isn't there any urgency around tier-based usage rates?
So, so we can go into tiers? That's, that's something we could do. The issue that comes up with tiers is that it's an equity thing as well. So you have a.
People that use a lot should.
Well, it's not necessarily people that use a lot. It turns into, you can do tiers off of property type. So you can have a single family household rate, you can have a multi-unit rate type of thing.
We have to figure out what worked for us, right?
Exactly, so we can enter that at the same time. That overarching bill with MWRA is going to stay the same. So we need, whatever way we get to that number, we need to still get to that number.
And look, is, this question's like, are the rate payers absorbing the cost of the water for the schools? Or are the schools paying for their own water as part of their insular billing system? For example, they pay electric, they pay heat, are they paying their own water?
The way the system's set up right now is no.
No.
Town departments are not either.
Okay, okay. You know what? This is a great chance for a fresh start.
But again, again, it's either going to hit the tax rates or it's going to hit your water bills. It will get paid from the money from the community either way.
But fair is fair and obviously worth looking into, right? Something we need to talk about as a community.
We, I had conversations about the same thing in other communities as well.
Yeah, it's strange to me, but also how much of the water and sewer is being allocated to the center redevelopment? So tying it into your presentation here, maybe we can't afford that.
This is to pay for our bill this year.
So, so the monies so far, the twenty-two dollar and ninety cent rate and the clawback, none of that is used for the, designated to go to the center redevelopment? What about in the budget, the future water and sewer?
Next year, it can incorporate the borrowing for the center business district if that happens.
Can we afford that? I, I don't know, I don't think.
This is, so previously what the town had done was it increased water rates and then it decreased them in the next fiscal year at the beginning of the year.
So some type of a flat?
I don't want to do that. Because that adds no certainty to anyone's billing or anything like that. I'm trying to get this as an incremental change, like I've said, and not have to have these big hops. Because if you look at that line and extrapolate that out further, you all were not, the town and the people in charge of the town in terms of the water rate were not changing the water rate accordingly in the past.
So I'm not sensing much of an urgency around defining the difference between what the MWRA says we used and what we actually used, which was a six percent reduction. Either we've got some massive leak or there's un-metered, like now this revelation about the school water and the municipal water being baked into that number makes a lot of sense because there's this big discrepancy between what you're able to acquire for revenue, right? And from the conservation efforts and everything, you're only able to acquire this for revenue because we've got all of this here. How much of that is a leak? How much of that is schools? How much of that is, who knows what it is? What's the difference? I would love to see a sense of urgency around defining that, that difference so that we can all have trust in one another. And that's the request for the audit is because I want you to start with a clean slate because you're going to inherit the sins of the past. You're only here seven months. If I were you, I would be pushing for an audit like heck.
So I am pushing for an audit. I reached out to the state and the state said no.
They said no.
So we need to.
Why no? We need, they just be invited. I talked to them, too.
We are.
We're a municipality, the Town Council needs to vote.
So there are multiple factors with that. The Division of Local Services does not want to engage auditors in this process because we pay our bills. If we were not paying our bills, so if we had decided not to pay, increase the rate and we decided not to pay the bills, then auditors would come in and rip apart our books. Because we are paying bills, the audit is not something that the state is interested in doing. In terms of the Inspector General's Office, they have a wealth of things that they are working on that are more important to their office, unfortunately, than auditing our water rates. So I'm willing to audit. I'm looking for a little more flexibility in terms of who performs an audit. Could our outside auditing agency do that for us? The auditor of the Town Council do that? He helped come out with these rates, so maybe he, people wouldn't like him doing it.
I think it would be more credible if it were an outside agency, to be perfectly honest.
So that's, that is, that is fine. So again, I'm asking for if that is okay, that it's not just the state coming in.
What about the Department of Revenue?
The Division of Local Services is part of the Department of Revenue now.
At least we know.
Yeah, that, so that's something we can look into.
But we absolutely, and you deserve it, you deserve it as a professional, you deserve a clean slate. And I'm telling you, if we don't recognize the problems of the past, we will not be able to put controls in place to prevent it from ever happening again. to put controls in place to prevent it from ever happening again. When you showed that chart, what the he, who were we, asleep at the wheel there? I mean, there should be controls in place.
So, so, again, that's what I was saying. You guys went from a million dol, the town went from a million dollars of reserves down to forty-six thousand.
So, ultimately...
That is a hard place. So, that was the thing. The rate was artificially suppressed at that time. You should have a reserve, because when an emergency happens, we want some money to fix an emergency.
Right.
In the event that an emergency happens.
But help me understand why our rate is the highest in the MWRA network right now, at twenty-two dollars and ninety cents. Why is a two-mile-by-two-mile town with limited infrastructure the hi, way higher than Belmont, way higher than everybody?
I can't speak to that.
That's crazy. So, that's why an audit, in my mind, the audit would help us pinpoint what the heck happened.
Okay.
What are we doing wrong? And, and it's, and it's shocking, the increase, and I get it, and I get we had to pay our bills. But when you look at the MWRA website, they're only increasing their rates three-point-two percent. I mean, it's pretty, pretty steady, their increases. So, I don't think we can blame the MWRA. The difference is somewhere in between. So, the big question, the question everybody wants the answer to is, are ratepayers subsidizing projects, expenses, salaries that are unrelated to the delivery of water to their homes?
No. They're not. It's an enterprise fund. That's, I mean, it's all there, so...
When, when you say that, though, how is paying for the water for the school associated with delivery of the water to my home?
It, so, different communities handle it different ways. Some communities put it on the departments to pay for it themselves, like when I was in Brookline in Somerville, we did not do that.
So, when you look at the budget from last year, though, I see eleven salaries associated with the water department.
Okay. The water sewer commissioners, right, or, our director, Public Works, is right behind you.
I wanna know who the laborer driver is that makes a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, because I have a marriageable niece. I just, this, these are the things that I think an audit would really go a long way to clearing up. Because, look, I'm not an accountant, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a real estate professional, uh, I'm a widowed mother of two children, two older children. And, and I'm looking at this, and I'm going, "Come on, guys, let's get some clarity around this issue."
Okay.
So, we, we deserve it.
There's a lot of information, there's a lot of information in our new budget.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And so, concrete next steps? What are we gonna do?
I'll reach out to an auditor. I would welcome...
I'll help, I'll help. Like, I'm not against anybody. I'll help. If you wanna start a little commission, Citizens for, you know, Water Clarity, has a nice ring to it. I mean, I will help. So, if you're looking for citizen participation, you got it. I'll help.
I'll talk with the council about what they want to do.
Thank you.
So, just going back on that salary, that actually represents four positions. That's not one. So, it's, it's four for thirty thousand dollars, not one for a hundred twenty. So, sorry to your niece. Um, okay, with that, um, sorry to the people who are, sure, one more, last one.
I just, like, just speaking from my seat. Where is all this money gonna come from, raising our water and raising our taxes? Going, you know, again and again and again?
Wait, what, can you rephrase your question?
No, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, this is, I mean, I'm presenting a...
Where is all this money going to come from, raising our water and raising our taxes?
This is, this is what my presentation was about, is about the budget and what we're doing, changing year-over-year property tax, motor vehicle excise tax, those types of things.
I have a question. Um, do the businesses pay the same rate per under-revenue fee as residential?
Yes.
Why?
Because the, there has not been a split in that rate ever.
So, the laundromats, restaurants, and everybody else is paying the same amount?
Yes, just like with the taxes.
So, a three-person-a-family building is paying the same amount as the laundromat down the center, and a lot of houses?
I understand your point.
Well, what if they can be upgraded or something? And what about apartment buildings? Put a meter in each apartment?
So, all of these things can be explored.
Like other cities and towns have.
Okay. Thank you.
Malden, that, that, where the, uh, stone works was, they all have to pay their own water, each unit. And that's like a little city in itself.
Certain municipalities deal with it certain ways. All right, last question.
Hello, Dawn.
Hi.
Hi.
Dawn Manning.
Nice to meet you.
Nine Elliott. I'm a point person. So, um, the Winthrop Foundation, that's Massport money. I remember when that picture was taken. They, they shook hands, it was in the paper. They were gonna give us money. It's payoff money for the garage that they're building. They never actually gave us that money. Now, they're giving it to us in payments? You know what they said to us last night at the meeting down at the airport? They told us, "We should be using that money to soundproof ourselves, because they're not gonna give us, like, any more money and all this other stuff." But I understand you weren't there. You inherited a mess. I am behind you a hundred percent, because you know what? It's not your fault. It's McKenna's fault.
No, no, no blame, no blame.
No, no. I, listen, I understand.
That's, we're not in a blame game.
But what I'm telling you is, this Winthrop Foundation money, we're now getting five years of five hundred thousand dollars. They told us last night to use that for, for us, not for the town. They said we should use it for soundproofing our homes. That's what they said to our faces last night at the meeting. So, now you wanna use it to fix, I would love to see the ATC playground fix. You know what? That's rated hazard one as of three years this month. This, the Cindy or Nancy, I don't even know her name. Sean will tell you. Sean knows. Three years ago, she came in and did an inspection. It's really hazard one. That means loss of life, loss of limb, or permanent disability. It's gonna cost over a hundred thousand dollars to fix that park correctly. Lisa talked about it last year. Okay, so where is that anywhere on anybody's budget? I don't even know. I don't even watch the school committee meetings.
That's, that's part of the Winthrop.
Okay, I saw that under this.
Yep.
That, that's what you would like to do, 'cause people say it's important? It's not people say it's important. It is important.
Absolutely.
It's safety. Kids are falling at that playground, breaking arms, have emergency surgery, getting pins in their arms. I don't know how many concussions. I don't know who's getting called. My kids don't go to school in town. I sent them out of town. They got this beautiful building, they're never gonna step foot in it, because we're not taking care of our people. And like I said, this is not your fault. You inherited this. You know who's to blame? Most of the people sitting up there. Okay?
Right.
And nothing's gonna change, because when people continuously vote, people in that don't do anything to change to help us. Okay, so, I'm behind you. I don't blame you for this mess, because you inherited what McKenna did to us, because he sat and looked me in the face and said, "Mrs. Manning, we are in the best shape of our lives. We have over a million dollars of free cash and money, okay? And you're right, we're in a mess. We did nothing for ourselves, but spend, spend, spend on wants, 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 and did nothing about our needs. And now, we're a mess." And you know what? I thought we were down to six percent leakage at one point. I'd have to go back on my notes. But I didn't come here to, to talk about any of this till this, in the Massport meeting, 'cause they want us to soundproof our own homes.
So...
As we get hammered.
Yep.
And you know what? You said twenty-twenty-five is when we get the two million dollars?
That's when it, it rolls up to that.
Now, till then, what happens to all the people that are gonna lose their houses because they cannot afford to stay in this town? 'Cause I can probably name about fifty that are gonna choose between lifesaving medicine and putting their houses up and going bankrupt. There's a lot of senior citizens, and it's not your fault. Again, it's not your fault.
So, can I speak to the soundproofing quickly?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, I just, so, uh, two weeks ago, I spoke with Rep. Clark's office. The Massachusetts delegation is leading in the House the effort to add in soundproofing in terms of changing the FAA regulations. I have made it quite clear to our federal-level leaders that it is not good enough to soundproof houses had have never been soundproofed before. They need to include the housing that has been soundproofed previously, because last time I checked, hurricane windows from thirty years ago are not built to the same standards as hurricane windows now, to kinda use an analogy. I want modern soundproofing there. And I've expressed that to the upper levels of the government. Rep., um, Stephen Lynch is the one who's leading this effort, and they are working hard on this. The Massachusetts delegation is leading the fight concerning the FAA and soundproofing at the local level. So, our elected leaders at higher offices are working on this stuff. The current state of affairs with Massport, I don't like it in terms of soundproofing, and I agree with you. But our elected leaders, I am trying very hard to work with them, to get them to realize how big of a problem for Winthrop this is, and how much special attention they need to spend on Winthrop and Boston, who are feeling the most effects of this airport that is literally in their backyard. So, I agree with you more than you know, and I've been advocating on your behalf without you even really knowing about it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Um, on that note, Ron?
Fiscal year 2019, tax revenue?
Sure. Um, do you wanna hit on that? Fiscal nineteen tax revenue?
Oh, sure. Do you wanna come up? So, much of that revenue is, is set by the Proposition Two and a Half process, and so, the previous year property tax levy limit, um, is the base, and then you do a two-and-a-half percent increase on top of that. You assume some new growth, um, when we did a conservative estimate of about one-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars. That gives you to, that gets you to your new levy limit, which I think Austin mentioned earlier in his presentation, that's about a little over thirty million. Your debt exclusion is about a little over four million, so that gets you to thirty-four point one million. Oh, sorry, for nineteen. Oh, nineteen, it's the same process for nineteen, I can give you those numbers. The base for, oh, I'm sorry. So, I'm, I'm so sorry, I was reading my FY twenty notes. So, for FY nineteen, the base would be twenty-eight point one million. Two-and-a-half percent growth on top of that was seven, a little over seven-hundred thousand dollars. We had a, um, great new growth of two-hundred-eighty-nine thousand, um, which, um, equals a new levy limit of twenty-nine point one million. And the debt exclusion, again, is a little, a little under four point one million. So, that was the maximum allowable le, levy of thirty-three point two million. So, we did have two-point-eight million to increase in tax revenue. Did I add it up to thirty-three point eight million? Two-point-eight mil, from going from eighteen to nineteen? I don't have that in front of me to know. Um, well, yeah, there's the debt exclusion in, there's a debt exclusion in there that, um, makes them out a little bit. Yeah, yeah. Yep. Oh, at the top of my head, is, there's something like five thou, yeah, there's like over, between five and six thousand parcels, I believe. Yeah. I think it's at the end. Yep. Let's see. Yep. Are you looking for the average tax, are you looking for the average tax for a single-family home? So, I seem to believe now that this town, that's kind of low for a three-point... So... So, I have, I have the data in the book from the Department of Revenue, um, that's based on the inform, um, on the information that they have. And the average FY nineteen single-family tax bill is six thousand one hundred forty-five dollars, which is a three-point-three, point-four percent increase from FY eighteen. It's, there's something, there's similar. Is it eight? Eighty-eight, eighty-eight, eighty-eight hundred. There's eighty, yep. Eighty-eight hundred. You said eighty-eight hundred units? Dave, eighty-eight hundred units? Eighty, eighty-eight hundred, eighty-eight hundred units. Yet, the new, so, the new grow, there was new growth of about two-hundred-eighty-nine thousand dollars. That, so, this number, um, this number is dictated by the state. I, I will say, just in terms of the tax rate, that whole process is heavily regulated by the Department of Revenue, and we have to fill out forms that we submit to them every year, and they validate the tax rates. Uh, with that, I, uh, thank you to the people at home who are watching. I'm sorry I couldn't take your questions online, but I look forward to answering them on our town website as well. Um, I'll pass it over to Ron and the council.
Thank you, Austin, and David, and Anna, for a great presentation on the budget. It's the, one of the finest ones I've ever seen as an elected official in this community, presented to the public. Uh, it was certainly an eye-opener, and it's an education tool for everybody. Uh, it's all about transparency, and everybody will have an opportunity to go on the Winthrop website and watch this whole process as it develops. The town budget is a moving process. It's a moving document. And until the June meeting, where we adopt it and get it voted by the town council, there's all types of moving parts. And during this whole process, it's open to the general public to get involved. With that, I have to go to my seat. Okay, back into the regular council meeting. The next item is public comment. Any subject?
Mr. President, uh, just wanted to bring it to the citizens' attention. I've been notified tonight, as we've been sitting here, of a phone scam. Uh, the person identifies themselves as a winter police officer and asks him to call a one-seven-eight-one number back. Um, do not call that number back when the police do not have a seven-eight-one area code. Uh, number is six-one-seven-eight-four-six-one-two-one-two. And I can even play you a sample of the, uh, the message to the public, 'cause it was...
Hi, Judy, uh, Winthrop Police. Uh, wouldn't you have a second, uh, to parent that I talk to? Look forward to hearing from you.
So, that's the, uh, the message, what they normally would do, the person would call back. back, they would say you have to send money, or bill somebody out and send them money. This is a notorious scam throughout the Commonwealth in the United States, so we always identify ourselves, the officer leaves their name, and also ask them to call back at the six one seventy-four six one two one two number. So the public should just be aware of that, if they have any questions, please call the station. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Kathleen Napoli, Precinct Four. One item of concern, so that the MWRA and the Massport renegotiations are both coming due in twenty twenty-five. And I know that it sounds great, we've got that flat amount of two million, I think it was, and that sounds good, but why not, has it ever come up in these negotiations? Shouldn't we get a piece of the action up at the airport? Like, you know how they charge that per, you know, the fee, the local state fees, this fee, that fee? Why, wouldn't it be more lucrative for us as a town to get a piece of the action on every person that comes through that airport?
We have tried, uh, in, in many instances, uh, there's a fuel tax that the city of Boston collects like two dollars on each gallon, something to that. We've addressed a lot of those concerns.
They can pass that right along.
To the legislature, but we, we seem to, to come to the end of the road when it comes to that type of, uh, negotiation. Uh, I would like to just kind of update you on what we did with the mitigation agreement. The mitigation agreement was good until two twenty, until twenty twenty-five. And we, what we did is through, uh, Bob Delio and Joe Boncorri, uh, the town manager, and several members on this council, uh, we were able to get that open. We were receiving, um, each year, nine hundred thousand.
It was eight ninety.
Eight ninety.
But now it's going to go up gradually.
So the first year, they gave us an additional, in the first year of the remaining five years, they gave us an additional three hundred thousand dollars, okay? The second year, another a hundred and fifty thousand over that. And so when we get to the year twenty twenty-five, instead of being at a figure of nine hundred thousand dollars, we're going to be at a figure of two million dollars.
That's good, that's better than what was in the contract on the town website.
So now, instead of starting a negotiation at nine hundred thousand dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars, we start at two million dollars. So that's, that's what we made out.
And then my second thought is, with regard to the MWRA and the pumping station, we've got the chemical trucks going through the town, we've, and we get this, you know, mitigation from them, um, which is not really a lot of money when you think about it. Um, it's like eight hundred thousand, something, it escalates every year until twenty twenty-five. Maybe we ought to start to think as a town about some bylaws about charges associated with hazardous waste transportation.
In, the interstate transportation, when it comes to that, the Department of Transportation governs everything. We try, let me tell you.
Have you tried every angle in the book yet?
We wanted to put a toll gate.
A toll?
We tried, we tried to ban certain trucks, but every, every turn we took, this was back during the, the, uh, the, the start of the, the new sewer treatment plan, when we were negotiating, we tried many different things that we couldn't do by law. But, you know, it's unfortunate, but I think as we get nearer to renegotiating these contracts, these mitigation agreements, um, we'll get the, the public more involved to get their input relative to what we should be trying to look for.
Yeah, I mean, there might just be a big hole in the road leading to Deer Island that we can't fix, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Tom Corrido again, five. East Boston, Charles Town, the north end, gets consideration for the inconvenience by the tunnel to Mystic Tobin Bridge and everything else. Shouldn't we get consideration for the inconvenience of everybody's waste coming to a little Boston community off of Winthrop? When they built that place, the only people that could drive there were people that worked there that lived in Winthrop. Everybody else was bussed in or boated in. So can you make it? Let them boat that stuff in, let them run their car stop, and then maybe they'll be more considerate of us.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Looking, hearing number, close out the public comment section. Uh, the next item on the agenda was a public hearing. Uh, it was advertised, so we'll open it for the sake of opening it, but we're going to suspend it until our next meeting. Uh, this, the, the public, um, hearing is open. Do I hear a motion to postpone or to suspend?
I make a motion, we, uh, suspend the public hearing and continue to our next meeting so that the Finance Committee can meet on it and give us a recommendation.
Okay, motion has been made, is it seconded? Seconded?
Seconded.
Oh, sorry about that. Can you, I'll let you hear it again.
The motion was to suspend the public hearing and continue it to our next meeting so that the Finance Committee can meet on it and make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, motion has been made, do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Correspondents, we did receive a petition from Kathleen Napoli Will. We do have that as part of the public record, it'll be reflected in the minutes of tonight's meeting that we received it. We also received one from the folks at the Villarave Associates regarding a construction project in that area. Uh, committee reports, finance.
Finance committee, uh, was scheduled to meet last evening, we did not have a quorum, so we did not meet.
Okay, appointments and commissions? I'm sorry, there's one right there.
Yeah, no, I don't know if it's on. Uh, we met earlier today, appointments, commissions, and committees. Um, there are several people who report to the town council directly, uh, the town manager, the town clerk, and the council clerk. Um, so we were having a meeting and discussing, discussing the, uh, town clerk's position. I'd say it was pretty successful.
Okay, that's the committee reports. Uh, school department update. Based on, this was, uh, the highlights of the March eleventh meeting of the school committee debate. Based on the recommendations of the budget subcommittee, the school committee voted unanimously to recommend the fiscal year twenty summary needs budget to the town manager in the amount of twenty million sixty thousand and eight dollars. Uh, all four schools have completed the Alice training. Uh, the leadership team will be meeting next week to discuss the next steps for that. That is the training, that shows or educates the kids on what to do, God forbid there's every type of an incident where they become endangered, uh, which is a, a very good, um, program that they've instituted there. And, uh, the school committee congratulated the High School Drama Society for advancing to the semifinals of the METG Drama Festival. And that was it for the school committee meeting. Old business, um... We're gonna, there's none, because that, we put that over. New business, uh, to appropriate four hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty, the cost of replacing the lead water lines to residents throughout the town to borrow from the MWRA lead replacement program. Do I get a motion to refer that to?
Motion to refer to finance.
A motion has been made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. No, no, we didn't, that has to be, uh, it's, it goes to the Finance Committee, of the, the council, and then they report back whether they recommend it to the council for approval or not. So that'll be on the next, uh, i, agenda. Any other, yes, ma'am? Well, the council's going to take it under advisement, because we have been speaking with the town manager relative to his, uh, discussions with the state, and also if, if it's not going to be the state, if it's going to be a, a separate audit room that comes in, we need to find out the, the cost, et cetera. Okay?
So they will be a vote eventually?
Yes. Anyone else? Yes. Austin, have we started that process, or maybe David?
Uh, good evening, yes, we have started the process. Uh, we're working with form in place, uh, in order to engage in a public process that would take phase two of the master plan, um, that was done in twenty seventeen, and put that into applicable zoning with a, with a clear map, with clear, with, with clear guidelines. I'll defer to the zoning enforcement officer on any pending projects, and his ruling on it, on any of those matters, uh, but we're taking a posi, we're taking a proactive position to clarify any of the existing confusion that exists, uh, within the CBD now, and we want to make sure that's an inclusive process with the public, and is operated mostly as a phase two, uh, to the twenty seventeen CBD master plan. It depends, so we're, we're determining exactly how robust we want the public process to be, um, so it could be as, could take as long as we want it to, or it could be as short as we want it to. We're trying to find a happy balance. It hasn't started in earnest yet, we're still get, we're still getting our ducks in a row, we want, um, probably within the next month, we'll have a, we'll have a public meeting regarding that, yep. So, I'll, again, I'll defer to the zoning enforcement officer on any rulings for, for proposals that are currently before him. Uh, I, I encourage everybody to reach out to anybody for the town, uh, please do, uh, I'm sure that he could, he might be able to give you some clarity on existing developments that are currently in the pipeline, and how that, and how the zoning will relate to them. Yep. Sure, sure. Yeah, no, just to be clear, it's, it's our understanding that none have been proposed outside of the one, the existing project on Somerset Street. That is the sole project that's been proposed for that district right now. Yep. Okay. If you have a specific question about the zoning of that building? Yeah, yeah, sure, and you can always come and talk, talk to me in, in the manager's office if you want to sit down and walk through the process a little, in a little bit more detail, happy to do that with anyone, um, so please come, please come and see us. Um, and if you have a specific zoning question regarding that project, I, I, I will defer to the zoning enforcement officer. Okay? Thank you. The zoning officer is empowered under the law to make a determination, so, so generally how the process goes is that the applicant comes in and goes, I think I am in this zoning. The zoning enforcement officer goes, yes, I think you, I agree, or no, I disagree, this is the zoning that you're in, um, and they make a zoning, what's called a zoning determination. And they give that back to them, and that's the zoning that fits. If the applicant who is, feels aggrieved by that process, or they, they disagree, they can always appeal that decision to the Board of Appeals. If they aren't happy with that decision, they can continue further, they can take that decision to court. There's always another step in the process to appeal. Um, so right now, it's under my understanding that the, that the zoning enforcement now for the Commissioner of Inspection Services is making a zoning determination, and will have a formal determination before the planning board, um, imminently, within the next couple of days, regarding that project. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank David, I, I sent an email to the council, the, uh, the town manager, and to, uh, David, he's offered to meet with me tomorrow to discuss some of these issues, so I think we may be able to clear up some of the stuff at that time, but let me say this, I think it's appalling that we're sitting here tonight doubting where the line is, okay? First of all, walk down the street, you take a look, the house is a residential house, it's been in a residential district all along, it's never been moved, it's never been changed. The house, the, the project next to it that's now under consideration is adjacent to a residential district. That means that there is a two and a half story limit on the construction of that property. Chief Delahanty, when he was filling the job of town manager, did some exhaustive research on the thing, and told us clearly at a meeting that the boundary was set, the boundary was clear from all of his research that he did. The bound, the, the problem arises from a faulty map that was included in the, the master plan that was adopted some years ago. That conveniently included every adjacent house in the Center Business District in the Center Business District. Simply put, it would negate the two and a half's limit that exists for houses that are adjacent to it, because they would no longer be adjacent to, they'd be, they would, they would be in the district. It's fallacy, it's, it's foolish, okay? You want to know the boundary, open your eyes and take a look down there, and you'll see the boundary, it's readily apparent. The store next to it is a house. It, it is no question in my mind that, that, that that should have been taken, we've asked repeatedly, over and over, for the last year and a half, to clarify this matter, okay? If there's any doubt, adopt an ordinance, do something, or simply say that the existing map is the map and make it clear. The fact that we've talked about this for as long as we have, and we go to a planning board meeting, and there's some doubt as to whether or not the, a building in question is adjacent to a residential district is foolish at this point in time. Second. We had a petition. We've had questions about the center zoning, we've had some concerns about it. Put before the council a petition, hoping that it would engender some discussion of about four me, four points of the, the height of the buildings that are, that are allowed in the Center Business District. The setbacks, how far away from residential properties should a multi-unit building be? Everywhere else in the town that allows multi-unit buildings, all of that zoning calls for a fifty-foot distance between that and the residential property. It may never happen, but somebody could build a, a multi-unit building fifteen feet from my back fence, and, and that's, then that would be considered appropriate, but if it was in some other part of the town, and it was zoned for that, it's, it's fifty feet. We think we ought to talk about that. There's no density requirement for the Center Business District. Everywhere else says, if you've got so many square feet of a lot, you can build so many units. Some of that is two thousand, one for every two thousand square feet, there are different ones for different types of zoning. There's none in the center. The parking. I haven't heard one person since we began talking about this that's able to justify a parking requirement of three quarters of a parking space per unit, okay? Take the building this in question, okay? Building in question requires three quarters of a parking space for each unit. Vesina's house, which is right next door, next to mine, requires two parking spaces per unit. In that close proximity, why the difference? Nobody's been able to explain or give me any kind of a rational answer. We've asked for some kind of a way to test, to discuss this. Let's talk about it, let's come up and come up with a, yeah. And then the petition was filed in May, council had three months to act on it under the charter. Said, look, we understand, you've got some issues, we've got, we've got counselors who've had to recuse themselves, you need, so you have six people, you need five to pass something, let's try and find something that everybody can agree on, okay? We came before the council repeatedly to make that request. I've been away to warmer part of the country for, for, since the last time, which ends you dealt with the, uh, the petition, but the petition, in January, which should have been acted on in August, is shuffled aside with a parliamentary gimmick of indefinite postponement. I think it's unprecedented for the council to take an action of indefinite postponement. Every other met, meted that comes before the council is either adopted with a yes or no vote, okay? I, I just, I'm, I'm frustrated with the way this has been handled. I know David's going to take a look at this thing, he's, he's in place and so forth, I'm willing to work with him and, and do it, but I just have to say, particularly the idea of this boundary line, just frustrates and angers me. Thank you.
Tom, that, that was reiterated by one of your residents while you were away, and my answer to, to their inquiry was that we technically tabled the petition, technically tabled it, but the issue was not tabled. The issues that were raised in that are being addressed by this review, that we, we appropriated thirty thousand dollars. Am I correct? I know, but whether you call it killed, postponed, tabled, whatever, the issue is being addressed on, that's what I'm trying to express to you. We appropriated thirty thousand dollars two meetings ago for this company to come in, this was part, the company that came in, that was part of the first go-around, to review everything, and those issues are on the table. We made it very clear to Austin and to David, and when you have, you sit with David, ask him.
I, I agree with a lot of what Ron said. The, the purpose for why we, why we enacted that money was to take care of ninety percent of what you just said, Mr. Riley. Another thing that I want to note is that the master plan is not a binding document. It's not one that has any, uh...
Perspective impact on how we, uh, should interpret our laws. Um, so this notion that somehow when we adopted the master plan, we were taking, we were moving zoning, I don't even know if the master plan in any way even mentioned zoning. All that I saw when I've read that document is that it was an area that, that group of people, our neighbors, in many cases, and business owners who were on that committee, were looking at when they adopted it. It was not something that we took up as a zoning measure, so it, it would have no impact on, on how we look at zoning moving forward. The reason, the, the, the reason why I think it is important to move forward with this map, and, or the process of making those lines more clear...
move forward with this map, and, or the process of making those lines more clear, is just for that purpose, for clarity's sake, because that is what has been lacking. We don't want one person coming in and interpreting it differently than the town does, because we know, we did a lot of work on what we think it is. We need to now make it clear so that no one could come out, come out and say, "I think that it's wrong. I think that the analysis we did, you know, I think it was almost eighteen months ago now, is wrong." So that's why we need to move forward with that, not only for developers, but also for the neighborhood to have a peace of mind when they know. And then that's going to impact all of the decisions that we're going to be making also about what we want to be in there. A lot of people have brought up the Point Seven Five parking. If that's something that we want to change, that's something that I want to look at. But I think we should define those lines prior to that, and that's really what we're doing with this thirty thousand dollars, is to quell a lot of the concerns that people have, and also, and also give certainty to people who might want to develop down the center. But thank you for the comment.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Karen.
Karen Choudhury, Precinct Five.
We can't hear you, Karen.
I'm quite fascinated by this public safety building.
We can't hear you.
But I don't need you, because I spoke to the chief, the fire chief, and he assured me that both he and employees change are working very hard on this, with people that are key, so I truly appreciate that. The other thing is, just a suggestion, this one. All the water that's being used by schools and public, I understand why that's a problem, but maybe that usage could be shown someplace, so the people could understand that it's not all leakage, that some of it is actual water being used. We don't want the town buildings, or the town departments, to pay the water bills, because it's just coming out of our pocket anyways, and it's just, what difference does it make? I mean, I own a home with her, I own a true family, I know what water bills are, please, so please don't even think that I don't. I have a fifteen-year-old grandson who lives in the shower, so he can well manage, plus the washing machine going because of him. But again, just if the town could understand using from the school, even from the rip, the amount of water that is used, they may understand it a little bit better.
Good point, thank you. Yes?
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio. I think what is so baffling to me is that we're talking about our tax revenue, and we're talking about our, you know, lack of commercial taxes and stuff, when we don't have accurate zoning maps. We don't. I have been to planning board meetings and town council meetings with people on this board that have said there are certain ordinances that have supposedly been approved that are not accurately reflected for our developers. So, and we could talk about marijuana zoning bylaws, which again, my friends know I'm against, but we can talk about the old middle school, we can talk about so many different things. The fact is, there's members of our council that have said, by no fault of their own, and by our planning board, that there were supposed zoning ordinances enacted that are not reflected in our zoning maps, in our zoning ordinances. We had our, I think it was Copelman and Page, whoever our, you know, council is, which again, I'm in the real estate legal field, there are a great legal mind, if you will, for, you know, municipal accounting and municipal zoning, that it was said, "Let's look at our, our building inspector to determine zoning ordinances?" Are we kidding? That is not normal practices. Look at other cities and towns. It's not normal practices. So the fact that, like, and again, I'm frustrated, because I live, I'm a, I don't know, legal of butter, but I live five houses down from the old middle school. It's a decimated building that I think our council is voting to propose or transfer some odd monies to it for building expenses. And to have our town manager say somehow that our town is not actively trying to develop this property, yes, we are, but we need our town government to do so. I don't know I'm in some position to negotiate something. If the reasons I negotiated want to buy this property, that would be great. They don't want to. But I've had Dave Rodriguez, who I think is one of the most fabulous guys, like, who has responded to me and other people in our town, that has said that I'm actively engaged in figuring out what to do, and Mr. Lacerdo, and Mr. Vecchia, and Mr. Latieri, that have said, "Let's figure out how to get this done." But let's not be fooled. Whether it's past town management or past town councils, this middle school has been known to be vacant for over six years. So do not come to us as citizens and say, "We're anti-development," or "We're anti-taxation," or whatever it is, because we're doing our bloody best. I know my husband makes a nice chunk of change, I work, we're doing our best to stay in this community. Do not ask any more from us without the management behind it, because I worked on the debt exclusions for the schools and a pass override, as many of my fellow citizens did. Not that I'm great, whatever, we did it. I won't give this town another cent unless we prove what we're doing with our money. Please, this is obnoxious, and it's outrageous. Come to us with a fiscal plan that makes sense, and that justifies wages and expenditures and water and sewer increases. And by the way, our MWRA mitigation agreement is a disgrace. My mother negotiated that back with Ron Vecchia back in the eighties, I think eighties. It's decimated. It went from, I think, a fifty-page agreement to maybe three paragraphs. And I'm not talking honestly about the monetary value of it. I think right now it's maybe eight hundred thousand. I'm not even so much talking about the monetary value, the protections that were in there for this community. And then to have our town manager say that he's negotiating with the MWRA, and he's like sitting at tables? I'm reading the minutes. Where have you been? We have not since Mr. Riley, how long ago was Mr. Riley that you recused yourself from the MWRA Advisory Board? I want to say something about... Okay. We don't have someone on the board. We are the most impacted town. How are we being, how are we being represented? We don't have someone. So please don't look to the residents in the town and say, "We're somehow not doing our job," because we are. Why don't we have someone?
We have somebody.
Okay. I'm telling you that I have talked to the MWRA, we've had no one that showed up to the meetings. And they may be inaccurate, Mr. Vecchia, they may be inaccurate, they may be inaccurate, but, I mean, but come on, like, I mean, let's just honestly be real. Let's not put it on our town residents, "Well, you don't even live here." Like, we are struggling. We are working hard, we are doing our best, and whether you want to put that face on or not, like, we are doing our best to enact things. But don't tell me that we have a middle school that's been vacant for five or six years, and somehow it's the town's responsibility. Don't do that.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else wish to be heard? Tom?
I just want to clarify something. There are two boards that are in question, and I think, you know, we have a Board of Directors, and there's always been somebody from Winthrop.
Well, yes, yes, that's...
Peggy Riley, Poochies? Yes, yeah, served on it. I've served on it. Chief Flanagan is there now. There is a, there is an advisory board, but the advisory board is just that. They're simply advisory. They don't have any real authority. The authority sits with the Board of Directors. I think we're well represented there. The difficulty in, and I did the job for Peter Gill, the advisory board consists of the chief elected official in each community or their designee. I was Peter Gill's designee until the term, until the end of his term of office. The job becomes difficult because there's, we have a board of, a member of the Board of Directors. It doesn't make any sense for us to have somebody in the, on the advisory board particularly. It becomes difficult for somebody to do it, because there isn't any authority in the position. So we simply, we rely on our member, Chief Flanagan, for the dealings with the MWRA. I think we're well represented there. The vacancy on the advisory board, we could fill it if we could find somebody, but it's difficult to do that. But that's the reason for, well, okay, but that's, that's the reason why. The other, well, I've mentioned the advisory board, though, I want to talk about, the MWRA agreement, there is severe opposition to the idea of spending any money in Winthrop from members of the, for members of the Board of Directors. Board of Directors, quickly, there's eleven members. Three of them are picked by the advisory board, one from Quincy, one from Winthrop, and I won't go into where the other people come from for the matter of interest of time. The advisory board members have been adamant in their opposition to this. We've been able to overcome it, because we have the people who are represented, who were appointed by the mayor of the city of Boston and by the governor, who have been on our side. That certainly could change, but I, you know, the advisory board continues to oppose us, but, so when you take a look at what gets negotiated by the town in there, understand that there is a severe and a strong opposition by several members of the other council, and the representatives of all the other cities and towns. They don't want to spend any money in Winthrop. We believe we're entitled to it, we should have it. I believe that's correct, and always have, but that's the, that's the reality of the political situation with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nick?
Nick Seotis, Precinct Five. I'd just like to thank Ron Vecchia, because for many people who've been coming here, it's been two or three years. Ron, you made transparency the essence. I really want to congratulate you on that, and I want to really reiterate on some of the things that have been said tonight. I hope anything that is brought in front of the Council is addressed according to the Charter and according to Massachusetts state law. In addition to that, I would like Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Faison to go on YouTube and watch the first forum we had last year. It was almost a year ago, April first, 2018. Mr. Vecchia called for a community forum, because he thought that the issues down throughout the town were very serious. So I would like both of you to take a look at that meeting, April first, 2018. That will give you a really, a true reflection of what the people of Winthrop really think about what's going on, whether this process is too massive for us, and whether this cost basis is going to really, really put the town in a very bad situation. And in addition to that, I think Mr. Delahanty did an excellent job as Town Manager, because he was here that night to answer all questions, and I commend both of you, because you've both come into a very serious situation, where at the beginning of this, the residents, the constituents, and people who should have been reached out to, were not reached out to at the time, and there was no real input by the public. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Here we go, now, your motion.
I have a couple things, I have two questions.
Is that okay?
Two questions. First, I did not respond to Mr. Riley's comments. When he stated about the center, and to me, it's, you know, setbacks, setbacks, parking, I mean, I think that is worthy of discussion and needs to continue. The zoning, to me, just, I think you could get two high school kids to go down there and say, "This is a house, this is residential, this is a business." I don't understand why that takes so long. So that's the first thing, just to respond to that. Now, the second thing, I don't know officially, it's not on the agenda, but we talked about it earlier, would it be prudent for, I would like to ask the Town Manager for the next town, for the next council meeting, to possibly contact several others and get back to us on the pricing, what it would be for water, for water and sewer audits.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.